Thank you all for taking the time to attend. Everyone is busy and you've made this a priority. We appreciate that so many of you are here tonight expressing an interest in NYCHA. In accordance with Section 5A of the United States Housing Act of 1937 as amended, housing authorities are required to develop, with review and input from residents and the general public, an annual plan that outlines its priorities for the upcoming year. Federal law allows a public housing authority to modify or amend its annual PHA plan or plan. Significant amendments to the plan are subject to the same requirements as the original plan. On July 21st, 2017, NYCHA released a significant amendment to the fiscal year 2017 Annual PHA Plan to HUD for public review. NYCHA's unfunded unit portfolio includes Section 8 Developments, LLC 2 Developments, that currently receive no public housing funding. To finance badly needed repairs at these developments and preserve their affordability, NYCHA is expanding its Permanent Affordability Commitment Together Pact Program to create a public-private partnership and bring these units into the Authority's Housing Choice Voucher Section 8 Program. NYCHA has also released its draft fiscal year 2018 Annual Plan for public review and comments. The review period, which began on July 21st, 2017, encourages our residents and advocates to provide written comments on the significant amendment to the fiscal year 2017 Annual Plan and the draft fiscal year 2018 Annual Plan. These comments will be taken via fax and email through the mail and collected at this public hearing. The significant amendment to the fiscal year 2017 Annual Plan and the draft fiscal year 2018 Annual Plan were made available for public inspection at NYCHA's principal office at 250 Broadway, on NYCHA's website, at each local property management office, at all management and lease housing borough offices, and at four designated community senior centers. The amendment and the draft fiscal year 2018 Annual Plan were also sent to all resident advisory board delegates and to each resident association president. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the significant amendment to the fiscal year 2017 Annual Plan and the draft fiscal year 2018 Annual Plan. The amendment and the draft plan are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand, however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for a verbal exchange. NYCHA representatives will not engage in discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to questions. They are present to hear what you have to say about the significant amendment and the draft Annual Plan. This public hearing is being livestreamed over the internet and will be available to view on NYCHA's website. Joining us tonight, we have the NYCHA Board: Shola Olatoye, Chair and Chief Executive Officer; Michael Kelly, General Manager; Derek Seifus, Member; Jaclyn Arroyo, Member; Dayera Dinzi Flores, Member; Victor A. Gonzalez, Member. Before we begin, I would like to introduce NYCHA's Chair and Chief Executive Officer, Shola Olatoye, who will share with us a brief update on the amendment, draft plan, and Next Generation NYCHA initiatives.
And, of course, our other member, Jaclyn Young. Our apologies, Ms. Young. Thank you so much for being here. Good evening. My name is Shola Olatoye. It's great to see so many familiar faces. I just want to make a note, I believe we have hard copies of this evening's presentation and it will also be online, available for folks to download, in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian. So if folks need a copy of that now, I believe someone, raise your hand, has copies of them? Yes, okay, good. We have copies of them if you need them in a language other than English, which is what will be projected here this evening. As Ms. Hudson said, we are here primarily to hear your comments about this annual process of our significant amendments, namely, our unfunded units, our five-year capital plan, and our plans to implement HUD's new rule around smoke-free housing. What we have begun, started to do is also use this as an opportunity to provide sort of a state of NYCHA in terms of where we are in the implementation of our 10-year strategic plan, Next Generation NYCHA, and provide some general information about work to date and work yet to come. As a reminder for everyone, our goal, our goals, the plan's goals were very simple. One was to achieve some short-term financial stability for the Authority and to really think about the future of the Authority long-term, so as to preserve the housing of the 1 in 14 New Yorkers who rely on us. Two was to move this agency towards better efficiency and effectiveness as a landlord. That is our core business. It has not been something that we have, we have obviously struggled with over the years due to a number of reasons, but really putting that as a clear goal for everyone was very important. Third is to rebuild, reinvest, and leverage our real estate to help preserve the future of, of the affordable housing stock, the most affordable housing stock, which is public housing in New York. And fourth was to recognize that we're more than buildings, we're communities, and to connect our residents to needed services, et cetera. Many of you know this, we're the largest real estate residential landlord in the city and the country. Our almost 2,600 buildings represent almost 8% of the New York City market, 600,000 residents with both our public housing program and our Section 8 program. If we were a city, we'd be bigger than the city of Miami. You know, these are important contextual facts when you think about who we serve every day and what the challenges are for us to, to meet our mission. The reality is, and this is an important contextual point, not an excuse, $3 billion of lost federal funding in both operating and capital since 2001. Tremendous impact on both the physical deterioration of our buildings, but also in the delivery of services. So this is the reality that we find ourselves in, obviously only deepened and, and made more challenging in the new administration, and we'll talk a bit more about that. So remember, our first goal was to change the way we were funded to achieve some short-term financial stability. We were, I am pleased to say, you know, we, for, we have balanced this Authority's books for three years in a row. At the end of 2016, we projected a small surplus that we had planned to invest in ongoing improvements for the Authority. The dawn of the administration, the new administration changed that, and we'll talk a bit more about the current reality. Again, thinking about how to become a better, effective, and better landlord, we really have doubled down and invested in technology, both for our employees, 11,000 men and women who serve the Authority every day, a third of whom actually live in our buildings, both investing in that, our employees, but also in investing in how we deliver services to you, our residents, whether that be through using digital technology like the My NYCHA app, or moving the recertification process to an online process as opposed to the very intensive, paper-driven process. Change is hard, takes time, has been a bumpy process, but I'm pleased to say that not only, almost all, most of our public housing program is, is almost complete with this We have moved, almost 70,000 units of our 176,000 units towards a more decentralized management approach at the behest of our General Manager, our Next Gen Operations Approach, formerly known as OTMOM, which is really about empowering the property management team at the developments. Of those, those developments, the basic repair time is showing is much better than the rest of our portfolio. We're working to make those successes something that exists and can, and be a reality in the rest of the portfolio. A ton of work to improve our worst roofs. As you know, leaks, mold, all things that exist when you cannot seal your buildings. I was pleased to stand with the mayor earlier this year when he made an announcement to invest a billion dollars in the replacement of 900 of our worst roofs, so $100 million over the next 10 years to help us really preserve these buildings and, and seal them from the elements. And this has been an ongoing, this is an ongoing capital program in addition to the federal money that we receive. In addition to actual bricks and mortar, improving the physical characteristics of our developments, trying to make them safer through improved lighting and layered access and better doors. As many of you know, this, these elements are not funded by the federal government. We primarily fund these capital improvements with city council funding of late. There's been, there's been a small amount of state funding, and we're pleased to say many people in the room have helped to fight that fight, and we expect there will be another one in, in the upcoming year. But, but this has been a marked improvement for many developments, and we hope to extend that throughout the portfolio. Actually, yesterday, many of us were at Red Hook announcing the, the beginning of the start of permanent construction at that development, but of the 35 developments that were affected by Hurricane Sandy, and I should, we should pause for a moment for the many people in many countries and many cities in the southern eastern part of this country who are now experiencing the impacts of Hurricane Irma, many of whom we know live in HUD-assisted or public, public housing and will be tremendously affected. We should pause for a moment of silence for them, as well as the victims of Hurricane We know here in New York, recovery takes a very long time. We're coming up on the five-year anniversary of Hurricane Sandy. We have to date the largest FEMA recovery grant of about $3 billion. Work is happening at 23 out of the 35 sites and more to come by the end of this year. One fact that I'm pleased to say is that there've been, actually, that number should be about 300 residents hired throughout the program and counting, a very important component of, of our Sandy recovery and resiliency work. So one of the strategies of Next Gen, going back to that, that third goal of rehabbing and leveraging our real estate, is, is to, is to preserve, was something that we talked very specifically about in our 2015 plan. We mentioned the need to come up with a strategy to, to turn on the federal funding in the unfunded units. These were, these were units of public housing that were built by the city and state, and they stopped funding them in 1998. So essentially, the public housing program was subsidizing these units. So in 2015, when we released Next Gen, we said we have to figure out a strategy for these units. This is not sustainable. It costs about $13 million a year to, to run these, what, run these units, and there's no capital program for these, for these units. So in addition to identifying a strategy for those units, we are a part of the mayor's Affordable Housing Plan to create new 100% affordable housing throughout the city. We also have launched our Next Gen Neighborhoods Program, which is both creating more affordable housing, but also building market-rate housing, a fact that is the reality and the need to generate more revenue to invest in the developments where we do the, where we are actually doing development. And third, that we would utilize every tool at our disposal. And the most recent example of that is in Ocean Bay Bayside, where we worked with residents, community groups, and the like to invest some close to $400 million in that 1,400-unit property. So this is about preserving people's homes. It's about thinking about the future in the face of significant federal, continued federal disinvestment and trying to outline a path for a long-term preservation. So as I said, there are, there's a number of different real estate activities happening. Many of you have been engaged in these, in these discussions in your local community, and we will continue those, whether it's on the, in the 100% affordable lane, or in the Next Gen Neighborhoods lane, or in the PAC or Preservation of Public Housing Program as well. So one of the items this evening, again, as I mentioned, is the strategy to actually turn on a federal subsidy for these unfunded units. We call this LLC 2. These, these units, as I mentioned, were originally built and funded by the city and state. They have not received funding since 1998. Actually, this number tells me $23 million a year in public housing operating funding to support these units. And what is most staggering is the almost $800 million in capital needs, meaning roofs, boilers, windows, all the things that actually affect the quality of life for our residents. So our current approach, as outlined in the significant amendment, is to both work with HUD, and we've been working very closely with not only the residents, but local HUD, as well as our colleagues in Washington, to convert these units to Section 8 upon turnover. The reality is that has taken a very long time, and these, and the needs are only growing. If we continue this strategy, it'll be another several years until those properties see a, an operating source. There still is no capital source with that strategy. So we have proposed a new approach, adapting, adopting our approach of preserving communities together, converting these, these residents to Section 8 voucher holders. And, and what PAC has, has meant is that these residents retain the same public housing rights as our residents in the public housing program, that also there is substantial improvements to the building. We're able to actually leverage private financing, which public housing authorities cannot do. And it also allows us to ensure the long-term affordability and a reliable funding source for these units. So there are eight developments around the city, some 5,600 units. We have started in a phased approach, again, something that we've taught, been talking about since 2015. The first bundle of these units is our Baychester and Murphy, both properties in the Bronx. And we began resident engagement with those communities earlier this summer, and will continue as developer is selected and the process of securing the financing proceeds. These are just some photos of the work, the before and the after of what our public housing units look like when we are able to actually go and leverage funding to support the rehab of these buildings, something that we are unable to do in the current, with our capital, limited capital funding. And as we think about that fourth goal of engaging our residents, and, and this has been a really important part of our work, connecting residents to permanent jobs and as well to services, something that many of you have been a part of and helped us make sure that we are getting the word out to as many residents as possible. A ton of work has, has, has actually happened over the course of this past year to connect with young people within our, within the Authority for the first time in a very long time. NYCHA, actually, we, with partnership with several organizations, helped to create youth councils, and, and as you, any of you who've gotten a chance to spend time with these dynamic young leaders, they really are the, the future, and they are developing new programs and initiatives in their communities that they are leading with, with neighborhood and community support, and that's something that we want to continue and nurture. The other item that is for discussion this evening, something that we talked about earlier this spring, is HUD's plan to, not plan, now rule, to implement smoke-free housing in all of its multifamily assisted housing. This rule will, requires that housing authorities by July 30th, 2018, must implement a smoke-free policy that prohibits the use of cigarettes and other prohibited tobacco products. So we, there's been a very long process of both talking to our colleagues across the country, other public housing authorities, as well as members of, of the NYCHA, broader NYCHA community, about the potential impacts on NYCHA. How would this work? What does this look like? It's something that NYCHA's actually been engaged in for several years voluntarily with the Department of Health, and, and we really believe that that has been a very successful approach, which is actually getting, getting residents in, to encourage their peers around smoking cessation as opposed to a top-down approach. Nevertheless, HUD has implemented this rule, and we have gone through a process to identify some frequently asked questions about how this would work, how it would be implemented, how to support people who truly do want to quit smoking if that is an issue that they, that they are wrestling with. And I think we have some of that information either in the back or out front. So the dawn of this administration has meant some real impacts for public housing across this country. In February, the secretary, who has a tremendous amount of discretionary power, cut the public housing operating budget by a significant amount, which meant for us about $42 million in, in lost funding. In March, we then received another letter indicating that there would be a potential Section 8 deficit of another $34 million in terms of the administering of that program. As you know, we run the largest Section 8 program in the country, 88,000 households who rely on, on us providing that rental assistance. So in total, this is about a $70 million cut, and this is before an actual budget has been passed by Congress. So, you know, these are real facts. There was a tremendous amount of work that, that many people in this room engaged in, I think, to really let Congress know that these cuts were not going to be taken lightly. And I do think in the, the budget resolution that was passed for the remaining part of this fiscal year, we were able to hold the line with some, some less than expected, smaller cuts. The fight may, will continue as Congress literally began meeting today about the, the transportation, housing, and urban development budget. So there's much more work to be done, and I look forward to working with many of you to ensure that you have the necessary information to help ensure that funding at every level is, is, is level and/or increased to support public housing here in New York City and around the country. The last item is our capital plan. This is something that we do every year. We update it to reflect the work that is already underway, the work that is planned. I think the one important thing here that reflects a sort of change strategy here is that we are putting all of our capital funding towards capital items. It sounds somewhat, somewhat simplistic, but HUD allows housing authorities to utilize a portion of its capital budget for operating. We made a decision that capital needs were so intense that we were putting every single dollar towards capital. So you'll see the lion's share of what we are focused on is renovating the building interior, the, the building envelopes. That means, you know, roofs, exteriors, all the things that, that you may experience as water coming into your apartments, trying to seal the buildings, and then focused on the interiors and building systems. So, so this is important work. It is not always particularly glamorous, but we know it is the, the infrastructure that supports a healthy and decent home that we must continue to invest in with the resources that we have. And I am pleased to say that is the end of our presentation this evening. Again, copies of this will be available both online and paper this evening for, for your reading and enjoyment. Thank you so much for your invitation. I look forward to your comments.
Thank you, Chair Olatoye. We hope that as many people as possible will have an opportunity to express their comments. So before we begin the actual hearing, let's go over the following ground rules to make this evening go smoothly for all of us. If you wish to speak, first you must fill out a speaker's slip. They are available in the entrance area at the table marked Speaker's Sign-In. Please line up at each of the microphones in the aisles and wait your turn to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. On the stage, you will see a timer with three lights. When you begin to speak, the green light will be on and the timer will begin to count down. When the yellow light is lit, it means that you should start to conclude your remarks. When the red light is turned on, your three minutes to provide comments are over. A table has been set up outside so that written comments may be also submitted. Numbered speaker slips are non-transferable, and if you are not present or do not wish to speak when your name and number is called, you will forfeit the opportunity to speak. The hearing is being recorded and transcribed by a stenographer. So please speak only from the microphones in the aisles and identify yourself and your development or affiliation. Remember, we are here to comment on the significant amendment and the draft plan. Any personal comments on criticisms of or oral attacks on NYCHA personnel, resident representatives, and public attendees, or any demeaning, discriminatory, or ethnic slurs or vulgar language will not be tolerated. I, as the moderator of this evening's meeting, reserve the right to immediately move on to the next speaker online if any comments are deemed inappropriate. The moderator on stage is in charge of the public hearing. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow the moderator's directions. We are here to consider issues that are of concern to everyone, not issues that concern only a single resident or individual. If you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, we have tables set up outside specifically for that purpose. Please fill out a resident response form at the table outside marked Resident Complaints. The passing out of materials is not allowed in the auditorium. However, a general information station is available outside where leaflets and flyers may be displayed. Resource tables have been set up outside with information so that at the end of the meeting, you can pick up information that may be of interest to you. We encourage you to learn more about our community programs, including community engagement and partnerships, NYCHA emergency management, and Department of Real Estate Services. Copies of the executive summary of the annual plan are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian for review purposes on the tables outside the auditorium. Our first speaker is Lilith Lozano from Parkside Houses, followed by Micah White from West
Good afternoon. My name is Lilith Lozano. I came before you today in three capacities. As Treasurer of the Citywide Council of Presidents, CECOP, the President and the Chair of Bronx North Associations of Resident Councils, Inc., and finally, as the President of Parkside Resident Council. While I am honored to hold all these positions, I come to you primarily as the District Chair of the Bronx North and President of the Resident Council. With some regret and clear determination, I come today to speak against and oppose the annual plan of the New York City Housing Authority. My regret lies in the fact that contrary to the 964 issued by HUD, the Authority has failed to negotiate in good faith with resident leadership and capacity, and failed to the duty to partner with resident leadership in order to advance the goals of public housing in the city of New York. Once upon, once upon a time, the administration passed resident leadership had the least nominal seat, able to, to be at the table. Funding the very fine, the very first memorandum of agreement to NYCHA and resident leadership was the product of hard-fought but respectful negotiations, but ultimately gave the rise to the growth and development of resident associations, district councils, and presidents, and ultimately to CECOP itself. During the previous two administrations, NYCHA's leadership, the district councils of presidents grew up to a significant organization body capable of collectively representing the interests of as many as 100,000 of those public housing residents. Then we were visited by the present generation of NYCHA leadership. We welcomed and appeared to be a breath of fresh air, people with actual experience to affordable housing. What we soon learned, however, was that affordable housing was a term that meant to encourage public housing, but rather a new vehicle for removing public housing and replacing it with affordable housing. No sooner, no sooner had more administrations of NYCHA leadership take office when we started to see a different assault to the resident leadership perpetrated by the I'm sorry I have forward the rest of my testimony to Olutoye. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano. Micah White, you would make your way to the microphone, followed by Dr. Lenora Filani.
Hello. You know, it's so, it's actually so nerve-wracking to address you all from this position, so please forgive me if I'm a little bit nervous. I guess what I want to do is I want to speak directly to the resident board members, because I know each of you represents over 100,000 people. Obviously, there are not 100,000 or 400,000 people that you represent in this room. And I think what I want to say is that I'm very concerned about the morality of this plan, because what I see happening is that you are basically forcing poor people out of their homes and using the language of affordable housing. But we all know that affordable housing is not the same as public housing for poor people. So what I want to do, because you three are residents of these housing, and you have a tremendous responsibility to represent your neighbors, is I want to call on you to switch sides, to join us, the people, by any means. That could mean voting no. That could mean leaking damaging information. I think you know that what we're saying is true, and you probably have the evidence for it. You could give us that evidence. You could leak it anonymously. You could help us oust the leadership that is imposing this affordable housing paradigm. Basically, I think that it's really, I want you to go home tonight and just think about it, you know? You have a responsibility to your neighbors, and I hope that you will join us in building public housing for poor people, not affordable housing for rich people.
Dr. Filani, followed by Carmen Quinones.
Good evening, everyone. Several years ago, my phone started to ring off the hook. People were calling me from public housing because they were concerned with moves being made on them, a variety of different things, that actually left them feeling threatened. And we started talking about this, and bit by bit, various people that I knew and some people I didn't know were getting evicted from public housing, people, things that they had done for years were all of a sudden becoming criminalized. And it was clear that something was in the air. So over the last two, three years, we've collected thousands of signatures from people in this city, not just people in public housing, but we knocked on the doors of middle-class people, white, black, Latino, whomever, and told them that NICA was attacking its tenants, and we needed their support. You don't have to live in public housing to care about the fact that so many people are on the streets, they're living in shelters. You turn on the TV, mothers are walking through Harlem and other places with three-year-olds because where they're supposed to stay is in another borough. So to me, we could put out all the statistics, you could say all the things that you want, what you're doing and what people are supporting, and what the mayor is going along with. He actually is hanging out with Trump, who he supposedly can't stand, who's also participating in destroying what the people in our communities need. So everybody needs to stand up, say to this fine panel, say to the mayor, who speaks out of so many sides of his mouth, you can't even imagine it, and say to the people of the city, "We're not, we're not going down with this. We're not going to let this happen." I grew up in public housing. I grew up poor, and we had to live there, and we did live there. So all of this muckety-muck and all of this stuff that Shola is talking about, it ain't got nothing to do with the fact that we have the obligation and responsibility to provide for the people of the city, to provide for the people of this country, the things that they need. They have blown up housing in all these major cities around the country, and I guess they want the land for NICA, so they've been pretty laid back about that. But these are human beings that we're talking about. You can't address putting kids, their parents, on the streets, having no place to go, making this argument that they can do different kind of housing when they can barely afford where they live, and call yourself a decent human being. So I'm going to do, I'm going to do what I was taught to do. When I follow Dr. King--
Thank you, Dr. Filani.
--I follow him because I believe in the right and righteousness of everybody in this country, and we are going to raise holy hell.
Ms. Quinones, after Ms. Quinones, we have Harriet Hoffman.
Wow, here we go again with the same thing. Listen, I'm going to read this because I think this is very important, Webster's Dictionary. "And to mandate, to order, to command, to volunteer, to inter or offer into any service of his or her own free will. To blackmail, to extort by way of threat, force, danger. Do it or be evicted. Is blackmail. No to forced labor and no to slavery." Let me tell you, you know, we, my name is Carmen Quinones, and I'm the president of Douglas Houses. Got like 4,000 residents, and we're going, we keep going through the same thing. This plan, we've asked, and we've gotten together, most of the presidents, and we've voiced our opinion, and in no way, fashion, or form have these plans ever, ever took any consideration of what we asked or what we wanted. So I don't understand where the collaboration is, because, and I'm talking about 20 years, you know, same plan, what's changing? You know, I got 18 grandkids, I don't got time for this, you know? They need a home. They need a home, something that they can call home. I've been in that apartment 35 years. God, I'm blessed, you know? But I fear tomorrow. I fear tomorrow for my grandchildren and their children. I fear it. I fight publicly. Go and I raise holy hell to get funding for NICA. I'm with you guys, but y'all got to, y'all got to decide which side y'all on, because y'all not on our side. You know, it's, you're not, you're not being fair about this. You're not including us, you're excluding us. And we're tired. We've been fighting for years, the same thing, the same leaders, the same stuff. Enough? When is enough going to be enough? You know, you can't, we can't, you lose paperwork, we give you paperwork, paperwork is lost. You know, these elections are practically rigged. I mean, there's so much going on. Let's, if we're going to partner, then let's partner. Let's be real on this, all right? Because I just don't see it. I really don't. Because when I hand them paperwork, I want my paperwork. I want my paperwork known. I don't want to be told two months later that my paperwork is lost, and I got to do it all over again. And this is what all presidents are going through. So if you want to collaborate and you want to get together with us, and like I said, the only reason I go to Washington and I go against this dumbass president, all right, is because I think about my children, my grandchildren. It ain't about you, it is about me.
Quinones, wrap up your comments. Your time is up. Thank you. Harriet Hoffman, followed by Ronald Topping.
I wanted to start by saying that I feel sick to my stomach sitting here at this meeting. I don't think in my life I've ever come to what I thought was a public hearing, where there were so many rules about what you could and couldn't say, and so many, and such, and such a, an announcement that we're not going to, the people on the stage are not going to talk to us, you're not going to, you're not going to respond to us. We can stand here and talk to the wall. And that makes me sick to my stomach. So you presented to us these pretty pictures and PowerPoints and, and nice sentences that have nothing to do with what's really going on. What's really going on in this city is that you're kicking out the poor. And that is sickening. I find it ironic, really ironic, that I saw Bill de Blasio on the news today talking about how everybody was welcome in New York City, all the immigrants from all over the world, all the refugees should come to New York City and they'll be protected, while at the same time, let's kick out the poor. It's sickening.
Mr. Topping, then Margaret Masick.
My name is Ronald Topping, president of John Adam Houses in the South Bronx, also president of Advisory Board for Bronx Work. We are the ancestors of 154 years ago when we were emancipated here in this country in the North Hills of America. We were homeless then. You look like we're going back that way in that direction. I don't understand this new generation program or whoever, because we don't get an opportunity to stand there and sit at the roundtable to help make these decisions and choices. There are people making decisions for us that don't even live in public housing. How can that possibly be? The other thing behind that is that after we built this country, now we're no good, you want to move us? Israel, Africa, North Hills of America, from Wall Street to the Bronx, where do you want us to go? There is no other place for us to go. We're here, and we're going to stay here. We're not going to stand for this foolishness, or we're not going to tolerate this. This next-generation thing does not sound like you're getting a college degree in five years. What diploma are we going to get? The streets? You're building shelters and jails for us? This is what the plan is? We don't deserve that. We deserve more. And what we're going to do, we're going to stand up and fight for this. Yes, we're going to give, we're going to raise some, what we need to know, are you going to be with us? Are you going to stand with us? Because what we've done here, we don't deserve to be pushed around. When you get these damn developers to come into your place, they're only in the business to make their money. When they fix up the place, then they're going to charge you more. They keep taking, taking, and taking, till there's nothing else left to take. NICA residents are not lazy. 61% of them work. We pay bills. We not getting raises? How the hell they going to tell us what we need to do? We need help. And with this capital funding, raise some money. Let's find a way to get this money. Don't tell me what they're defunding. They got money, they got a mint in Washington, remember? This is where they making it printed. So let's find a way to exchange for goods and services. And lastly, but not leastly, them damn slaveholder names need to get up off of them damn projects, because they kept us in bondage for so damn long that we not taking that stuff no more. When NICA says get back, we say fight back. NICA says get back, we say fight back. NICA says get back--
We say fight back. O P. O P.
Margaret Masick, followed by Anne Marie McLaughlin.
Okay, I just wanted to speak about the RAD program and the privatization of the New York City housing, because we do have one of the developers in my area that's being overseen by Wavecrest. But at the same time, we also spoke to Congressman Meeks, and they're saying that the RAD is a pilot program to see, because we need money to fix the projects, to maintain it. But at the same time, you took the money from New York City housing, and then you're giving it, we had less maintenance, the halls were dirty. It's not like before where you had the money, where the maintenance man would come and clean every morning on every floor. So it's just now is like, slowly but surely is when they can, because it's not enough money. But yet you're giving the money to private people. You know, that makes no sense, because money is money, is you have to put the money in, back in New York City housing, not to these rich people to get richer. You know, it seems like they're using poor people to profit, to make money off of poor people, like poor people now is a business for you to get rich at. Now also, you know, because at the same time, they're saying here's RAD is supposedly helping us, but are you really helping us? Are you replacing us? Is this a regenification, or is this a kind of con game? It's just, you know, I'm fearful of that. And like they said, I was in a shelter many years ago. The way things are going, I feel like I'm going to go back. And then de Blasio saying we're opening up more shelters, we're opening up more shelters, what happened to opening up more apartments? You know, you pay way, way more, three, four, five times more to house a family in a shelter, and everybody knows that, it's no longer a secret. Where for a shelter family is like $5,000, $6,000, but yet you won't give somebody $1,500 to go in an apartment. So I feel this is just a con game. A lot of time is all these rich people getting together to say, how are we going to make money off of these people? While we just sitting there, letting it happen, and we don't know how to fight back. And then when we are fighting back, you're still sitting behind the table, making all these decisions that how are we going to make more money, and more money, and more money? And then like the man said, where are we supposed to go? Is everybody supposed to move down south? Is everybody, we're here, why can't we stay here? We have rights to stay here too, not living in fear of what's going to happen tomorrow, what's going to happen today. We are people, and I just hope you remember that.
Thank you, Ms. Masick. Anne Marie McLaughlin, and then we have Lynn Phillips. Anne Marie McLaughlin. Okay, we'll move on to Lynn Phillips. I'm sorry?
Up here.
Can we have a mic? You can sit, ma'am. Please sit, we'll bring a mic to you.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Phillips, and I'm a recent resident of NICA. I only moved back to New York a year ago, well, four years ago, but I made it into NICA a year ago. I sit on the Smoking Advisory Group, which is a large diverse group of people who are looking at the new smoke-free regulations, and I am the resident smoker in the group. I have real concerns over what's going to happen next July. Addiction recovery is not an easy process. It's not a cheap process, and it doesn't always happen on day one. I'm a drug addict in recovery for 38 years. I know the process. We need to be really careful. When I moved into the apartments last year, my first question was, could I smoke in my apartment? And the response was, of course you can, we have no restrictions on that. The restrictions are now coming up in a really short period of time. We are trying, as part of the group, to get together and understand not only the issues around a smoke-free building, but how do we put this information out to the residents? I've spoken to people within my complex, I'm in Ingersoll Apartments in Brooklyn. Not one person has heard about it. The 25-foot rule makes sense, except that, you know, it didn't work for corporate America. Because I lived in corporate, worked in corporate America when that came in, and people smoked. We have buildings that are within three feet of public sidewalks. What do we do about that? There are a lot of questions. I understand the need for a smoke-free environment, but I truly believe that we need to do better for everybody in understanding how we're going to implement it, what are the violations-- Because I lived in corporate, worked in corporate America when that came in and people smoked. We have buildings that are within three feet of public sidewalks. What do we do about that? There are a lot of questions. I understand the need for a smoke-free environment, but I truly believe that we need to do better for everybody in understanding how we're going to implement it, what are the violations and what are the consequences to those violations. Losing my home is not a consequence that I would like to see. And I know I'm not the only smoker. I run into a lot of smokers walking in the pathways, young people, older people. We need to look at this and we need to get the word out and we need to help people if they truly want to quit smoking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, for your participation in the group. Ms. Albertine Albert, followed by Willie M. Lewis. Is Ms. Albert here?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Today, I'm so happy to be here. It is a pleasure for me to be here and especially I like to see Mrs. Cola. Yes, good afternoon. I want to present myself. My first name is Albertine and my last name is Albert. I have a big problem going on with my office. They confuse about my name. And I know it's too lot of people name it Albert. But me, I come from Haiti. That's why I say my first name is Albertine and my last name is Albert. I come from Haiti. It been a long time, I'm living in the housing since 1996. Now, after I finished said my son go to the college, I don't know who steal my information. It is a big problem for me. I cannot sleep in my house. Since 2009, they make two men come and get my name while my son walk and come to my house. I don't know for what reason they take my name. My son come with me in my apartment since he have four years and a half and now he's getting big. So when they take my name for my son who come in my house, what that mean? That mean I have a man in my house and I don't report it to the housing. It's happened since 2009. Until 2017, I keep suffer very bad, unable to go to work, unable to go to church, unable to do anything. Police come and take me try for no reason because I keep calling 911 for help. I keep calling 311 for help. They count how many time I call, but they don't count how many time they helping me. This is what is going on. They take me two time. One time they push my door because one neighbor come and curse to me disrespect me behind my door and I call police. What police come? They threaten me. They say to me, never call 911 no more.
Ms. Albert, we have Ms. Buthis right next to you. She's going to provide you with some assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Willie Mae Lewis, followed by Darrell A. Garvin.
Good evening to everyone, the dais board members. My name is Willie Mae Lewis. I'm also a former board member of NYCHA and also a former TA president. I'm here today because I'm very upset about a lot of things. One of the things is I know that we have been cut $6 billion, but I also know that we have existing problems in housing. One of my questions again tonight is, we are part of the MAP program, which is part of Mayor de Blasio's program for NYCHA with the roofing. My question is, why are we not a part of the roofing with the $1 billion that Mayor de Blasio has proposed to? And I talked to my president, Mr. Tyrone Ball, and now he's telling me that he looked at something and that we are getting the same $15.5 million that Albany gave us back in 2015, but now all of a sudden it's coming from HUD. My question again is, why are we, if we are part of the MAP program, we are not included in the roofing program of that program? And that $15.5 million that has now miraculously turned to HUD instead of Albany? We have a lady in my development who is in the hospital now. I keep telling y'all not only about the roofing, but also about the plumbing. The building is 65 years old. We have a lady in the hospital now who had a terrible backup in her apartment on the first floor. The stench from it sent her to the hospital. She was already asthmatic. She's still in the hospital now. We have to do something. I know we don't have some of the money, but y'all find reasons to get money. And you also prioritize places where you spend the money, okay? And most of the prioritizing is in Queens, it's in Staten Island, it's never in Harlem where I live, okay? We need to find the money that, and when I speak to the politicians about money and they tell me that this money that was earmarked for St. Nicholas Houses, the $15.5 million, was given to four or five other different developments. And the insult with that is we have so many repairs that is needed in St. Nicholas, you give the money to another development that was earmarked for us? And then I have someone to talk down to me as if I'm illiterate, that I can't read, that I can't comprehend what I read when I see it in black and white?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
We need to do something with these aging developments and we need to start doing it now with the roofing and you keep bypassing with the plumbing. Thank you very much.
Ms. Lewis, next speaker is Darrell Garvin. Before I move on, I'd like to ask apologies to our resident board member, Ms. Jacqueline Young, for not introducing her earlier and also to acknowledge the chief of the Housing Bureau of NYPD, James Secretto, who just joined us on the dais. Darrell Garvin, and after Mr. Garvin will be Lisa Kenner.
Hello, good evening. My name is Darrell Garvin, tenant in Linden Houses. I am, well, I'm a better, I'm not too good of a speaker, but I'm a better listener. I just want to say that people, somebody in my housing keep leaving garbage and stuff on the elevator and I think it'd be a good idea to have cameras in the elevator to catch these people, you know, so when I come home, I don't have to smell the stench of garbage. In housing or cleaning elevators on the weekend and right across from where I live at, the boulevard, a kid got killed there and there was no camera in the elevators to catch the perpetrator. So I just, you know, like to say, I think it's a good idea to have cameras in the elevators. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kenner, and then we have Joanne Brown.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Kenner. I am the TA president of Van Dyke Houses. I have been coming to these meetings for years. I have seen different chairpersons and everything. And I also, last time I was here, I was talking about they was building on our grounds again. Now here come do my commerce and yet you say that you want the people input, but you don't listen, just like Beyonce Records said, listen. Y'all don't listen. Y'all want to do what you want to do. And see, if we don't have a place to live, y'all don't have a job. And if y'all don't have a job, you ain't gonna have no money, y'all gonna be homeless right along with us. So you need to be trying to work even more with us. But one thing I want to say, I didn't come up to beat up nobody today because there's a time and place. With the community centers, you got DYCD in our community centers, they took over like we third-class citizens. That's our centers, you know? Not only that, you talk about having money, you have to start renting the centers. That's how you generate money too. Now you imagine you got centers all across this city and you can't use it. I got residents that can't even have a party or 80th birthday party or 90th birthday party. If they do go somewhere, they have to pay $1,500, $2,000. We don't have that money. Remember, we poor. So I'm asking you just get a round table with people, make sure you got residents on there and put some staff members so everybody can know where the money's going, that it don't trickle out someplace else. And start opening up these community centers so we can start renting it so you could generate some money instead of for me have to come and look at my floors somewhere in the buildings and we don't have no stripper, we don't have no wax. Ain't the way we live. This is what we need to do. That's why I'm not gonna beat y'all up today. There's a time and a place. Hamish Young, how you feeling? Miss you. I'm not gonna beat y'all, but y'all need to know that you talk about generate money, you talk about self-sufficient. Self-sufficient starts at home. So then start opening up the community centers and we need to sit down with DYCD to let them know we're not third-class citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Kenner. Joanne Brown, and then Brenda Temple.
Okay, I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm not here to beat up on anybody, but I'm here to make a comment and a question. And I'm also an ex-rice president of 572, 574 Warmry Street. My question is, dealing with this storm that's coming up really right now, what do NYCHA have in plan in case of the flooding like they did for Sandy and everything? Because I'm saying you have a lot of developments that's right at the water, like Gowanus and all the ones that's around here and Manhattan. And when that flood hit, it hit very seriously and it damaged a lot of apartments. They was underwater and they couldn't even get back and they had so much mold in them, remember? So now, are we gonna, or do y'all have like a plan for NYCHA residents so that they can be able to go to a training so that when a storm hit or anything, it will be already implemented?
Ms. Brown, I'm going to...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
If your comment, then I'm going to connect you with Eric Baez right next to you and he's going to put you in touch with our Office of Emergency Management and also possibly Brooklyn Property Management.
Okay, and then now my next one is, I'm gonna applaud all of my presidents that's here tonight. I do applaud y'all, but then I have a problem with my, Mrs. Harriet Hughes, she's my president right now.
And Mr. Baez will be able to... Okay, if it's personal, Mr. Baez.
No, this ain't got nothing to do with no personal here. Because like I said, I sit on the community board six and I'm also a volunteer of our Brooklyn Borough President, Eric L. Adams. Well, what I do is, okay, so I'm saying to you, I don't need to let you know everything that I'm doing, but I'm in the community and I'm reaching out to all of my community people and also my development. But as I'm saying to you, if I'm bringing the information back to my development and also my community people, that's in my facility and if I'm putting them up on the store, up on the store windows, my president, Ms. Harriet Hughes, does not want me to put up no flyers regarding anything to do with NYCHA, either social security or either any kind of legal things or either exercising or whatever that's going on, that meeting that I don't went to to bring back the information, to put up above the mailboxes between her and Victor Cortez, they take, they remove them. And I want to know, what is the problem? If you have a person like myself that go out to these meetings and then bring the back the information?
Let me just connect you with Mr. Baez, who can take all of the information and direct it to where it needs to go.
Okay.
He's right next to you, Mr. Baez. He's walking towards you right now.
Not a problem, but like I said, I need us to know what's going on in that community because we got a lot of stuff that's going on down there in Park Slope with all this development that's going on.
Thank you. Brenda Temple, followed by Robert Scott.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brenda Temple. I live in Ocean Bay Apartments in Par Rockaway. I am one of the potential victims of the Next Generation Plan, if society will have their way. You know, this society is cunning, baffling, and insidious. And when I look across the table at all you people up there in positions of power, I can sense some empathy, some sympathy, some understanding about the plight that you are involved with and how it really affects us as residents of NYCHA and that you do have some kind of empathy for us. And so therefore, I really want to encourage you to try to reach down, do whatever you can do to make some amendments to these amendments that are going on. Make some amendments on behalf of the residents of NYCHA residents. And I say this because I know that a lot of it is already written in stone, but not necessarily. All isn't said and done. The thing is that you say 100% affordability and 100% affordability, like for us, is not affordable. You know, what you're saying is that term limits, that within five years, we are supposed to take the Section 8 and slither off somewhere into nowhere? Where are we supposed to go? Do you care? I know it's not you, but you need to care about us because we are the backbone of this society. We are your poor working class. We are the ones that clean your parents' and your grandparents' bed sores, that take care of your children in the daycare centers, that walk your kids across the street, drive them to school, cook, clean, you know, clerical workers. We are the backbone of this society and you pay us a little above minimum wage and where do you expect us to go? Continue, you need to continue to provide low-income housing for a low-income residence. We are a proud people. We are families, we are children, we are grandparents, we are success stories that continue to come out of NYCHA. And sometimes we have to start at the beginning and have a foundation in order to get people to climb on our shoulders and continue to move up and onward. So, you know, I'm imploring you, you know, you know what you need to do. We can make amendments to the amendments that you are making. And last but not least, there aren't that many people here today, but believe me, people are out there. We are aware and we are on board, we are building momentum and we will march by the thousands to represent each other, our community, to support one another, to continue to love on one another.
Thank you, Ms. Temple.
And to not be distracted by the programs that you have for our youth. Our youth need to be distracted from what's going on, but we need to stand up and take care of our business and we're going to do that. Thank you.
Robert Scott, followed by Juan Pagan. Is Robert Scott here? Okay, Mr. Pagan.
In February, it'll be 50 years that I've been living in NYCHA development, 50 years, half a century, right? So I'm gonna speak, of course, on the perspective as a tenant, all right? And I think, I know for a fact from what I've seen, what I've lived, what I have experienced, what I have seen others experienced, the tactics that are used by NYCHA to get rid of people is horrible, okay? You talk about being humane, you need to go back to school to learn what that means, all right? Now, in all the years that I've lived NYCHA, I'm gonna be 62 years old soon. I moved into NYCHA when I was 12. My tenement burnt down and my family had to be relocated in NYCHA. And I've come up with the definition of NYCHA's Next Gen Plan. This is the definition that should be put in the dictionary, okay? NYCHA's Next Gen Plan is all part of the erosion of housing for the poor to deliberately allow the deterioration of its buildings and developments in order to justify turning them over to private developers. That's what NYCHA Next Gen is. Take it from a man who's lived 50 years, well, in February it'll be 50 years, living in a NYCHA development, okay? And do have a couple of questions. You can't answer them from the floor, from up the podium where you're at, you can email them to me. I would love responses. Before I get to the questions, I just want to make one more comment. I guarantee you, if you speak to most of the people in New York City and ask them what kind of city they wanted to live in, they would tell you that they want a city that includes all people, okay? All, regardless of socioeconomic status and all the other differences that we have, okay? That's what makes us New Yorkers. This plan, the Next Gen Plan, will hurt hundreds of thousands of our fellow New Yorkers. I am not gonna stand for it. None of us here should stand for it. My... My questions? Simple. What is the breakdown? I haven't seen anything anywhere. What is the breakdown of the actual number of affordable units? Not the redefined affordable, but working class, the working poor people. Okay? What is the breakdown? Okay? What kinds of breaks, of tax breaks and incentives are you giving private developers in partnership? I would love to see that documented. Okay? And to answer one question on this flyer, what can we do about it? Our elected officials have abandoned us. They're in cahoots with this. I live in the East River, pride, I got the riverfront view. Okay? Rosie Mendez really for 12 years damaged us.
You can submit your questions and a contact information to Mr. Baez.
How much you gonna lower the 17 billion that you're in deficit with?
We're gonna move on to Yolanda Cancel followed by Vernell Robinson. We're up to 21.
Good evening. I am a resident of Homes Development. In August of 2016, a new tenant moved onto the floor where I reside. They moved into the apartment next door to mine. Ever since these new tenants moved into our floor, the quality of life for myself and my fellow floor residents has gone downhill. The new tenants play excessively loud music past 10, 11 PM at night until the wee hours of the night on a daily basis. They bang on the wall that connects our apartments. The new tenants are reputed drug dealers and have unsavory visitors and people hanging out in the hallway and in front of the building. The apartment they reside in is a one-bedroom, but there are at least four people residing in the apartment. Ever since August of 2016, numerous New York City 311 noise complaints have been reported against these new tenants. 911 calls have been made against these tenants and the police have responded. The new tenants kicked in the front door to my apartment and have verbally threatened me with physical harm. Several of the tenants on the floor signed a petition attesting to the behavior of these new tenants and how the quality of life on our floor has gone down ever since they moved in. All of these New York City 311 reports, times and dates that the police responded, a police report and full detailed reports of all that has happened has been provided to Homes Development Management. The only solution I am being given is that I have to find a new place to live, get an apartment transfer. That is not fair. That is not right. I have been a resident at Homes Development for seven years and I've lived there peacefully and respectful of my neighbors with no incidents. I am a member of the Homes Tenant Association and a member of the Homes Next Gen Committee and a member of the Homes Next Gen RFP Committee. I've devoted my time to improving Homes Development. I feel that nothing is being done to evict these, to evict these new tenants and it's not right. That it's not right that I can't get a decent night of sleep or reside peacefully in my own apartment. Many times I have to leave my apartment for several days just to sleep elsewhere so because I can't, because of the noise from the new tenants and I can't even sleep in my own apartment. I hope you will look into this issue and respect the quality of life of existing residents and evict these new tenants. They do not abide by the tenant rules and have no respect for their neighbors and our quality of life. Giving me a transfer is not a solution. These new tenants need to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cancel. Can you please see Mauricio right here? And then he's going to escort you to the person that can help. Thank you. I can have someone, I can have someone speak with you individually, but we're gonna stick to the speakers on the speaker slip and the topic of, of, of this public hearing. It's not an interactive exchange. I apologize, but I explained that in the beginning. We're gonna move on to the speaker Vernell Robinson.
Good evening to everyone. If I sound funny, please forgive me. I just had oral surgery. It was important for me to be here tonight because I've been coming to these hearings as I've heard other people say, and nothing gets done. You know, it's disgusting. I don't know who up there lives in public housing or not, but I can tell you like a gentleman that just left from this podium, I have been living near for 50 years as well. I've seen the good, I've seen the bad and now the ugly. NYCHA is wasting so much money. The lights are on 24/7. The water from the sprinklers for the summer, sun up, sundown, it doesn't make a difference. The money that you say you need, it can be redirected in other ways. NYCHA should not be privatizing the place where it's only left for people like us to live. If you private, where it's been said again and again, where are we to go? And now for myself, I am, I have a plan, a cast iron plan, but with the rent being proposed to increase and with, I don't even know how they came up with this formula that that the rent, that my income didn't go up, but my rent did. You know, you're trying to get blood from Turner's and we, we, we just can't afford what's there as it is. But we were asking that community voices heard for NYCHA and Build de Blasio, as it was said earlier. The city and the state and federal government have not really been putting money in the budget. Privatization is not the way to go. We're asking NYCHA to please fully fund all the repairs. I know you have to find ways you can do that other than privatizing because we'll ultimately leave our home, lose our homes. Really quick, it's been said to me that there's a tenant in Ocean Bay where they just did the rad and she got a new lease and her rent is going up. If that's any indication of what rad is gonna be like, and I think that's what we all feel it is, you can't do it. You can't, you gotta find other ways. If you work with residents who are living in the swabber, maybe we can come up with some suggestions together. You know, it's no way that people that's not a part of housing, that doesn't live in housing should be speaking for housing residents.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Your time is up. Next we have Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer.
Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer, Manhattan Borough President, and I want to thank the chair and the members of the board for the opportunity to testify and for answering many of our letters. I know we write a lot of them on behalf of residents of Manhattan. Um, I'm submitting testimony, but I just want to summarize. I have three recommendations on how NYCHA can improve Next Gen resident engagement just to start with. As you know, we've been working with the Homes tenants to start with, and I may disagree with the project as a whole because of the privatization, but the tenants themselves, to their credit, came up with a location that isn't the one that is being proposed. And I have to say, that's an example where the tenant's feedback did not get listened to. And I want to say that's a challenge and a problem that I think needs to be addressed. When tenants take the time, their feedback needs to be listened to. And second, at LaGuardia, tenants want a grocery store. Yet at the July 27th Resident Engagement Meeting, NYCHA said that there's only, only allows for ground floor community facilities when in fact it's possible to pursue a commercial overlay via a localized land use ULP. And then they would be able to get a grocery store. I will just say that NYCHA must engage tenants on all matters. Some LaGuardia tenants declined to attend resident engagement meetings because they did not think that their input would make a difference. If tenants do not receive timely repairs after submitting multiple work order requests, then they have little reason to believe that NYCHA will listen to their input about infill development. The two are linked. Next Gen neighborhoods must concretely benefit NYCHA tenants on that development. LaGuardia tenants are unclear about how Next Gen will benefit them. Residents at infill sites are giving up open space. They must be guaranteed benefits in return. And again, I'm not a supporter, but these tenants are amazingly able to work and to think and to come up with ideas, but they have to be given the real respect. Next Gen sustainability is a huge issue. You've been doing wonderful work, but it is, I was recently with a whole bunch of young women from NYCHA in Harlem. And number one on their list is the concern about rats. These are 15-year-olds and 14-year-olds. Recycling bins are now installed at all developments. If NYCHA is serious about making recycling work, then must follow up with education for every tenant. NYCHA is piloting NSYNC food waste disposers at 26 Lower East Side Developments. I just this week visited the Newtown Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant myself and spoke with experts about the impact of sending liquefied food waste into the city's waste water treatment facilities. I support the pilot, but I have a couple of recommendations.
Well, President, we'll accept your comments.
Okay, I just want to say two other things. We have to work on job training because there are lots of challenges about the academy.
We're gonna need to move on. I'm sorry, we have a lot of speakers that are waiting.
All right, thank you very much.
I have the full testimony. Oksoon Son and Keisha McAllen.
저는 캔스브리지 NYCHA 아파트 25년.
Hi, my name is Oksoon Son. I live in NYCHA for 25 years. I'm with CAB organizing Asian community.
우리 한국식 시영아파트에 사는 한국 사람들이 영어를 못해요. 그래서 랜티비가 엉뚱하게 나와도 가서 얘기를 해도 들어주지를 않아요. 오피스에서.
Um, I am here to represent thousands of immigrant tenants in NYCHA. For the next hearing, please get Korean interpretation service. Also.
한국 사람들이 희희 안 나오고 이래서 가서 얘기를 하면 오피스에서 들어주질 않고 추운 데서 살면서도 랜티비는 잘 내는데 그 언어 통역자가 없어서 참으로 불편합니다.
98% of Korean tenants in NYCHA Queensbridge are senior and they are limited English proficient tenants. None of the documents such as income recertifications that NYCHA provides is translated in Korean. So there is no way senior Korean tenants can communicate with getting help from neighbor, family and without, without getting help from neighbor, family and CAB, which is, which has limited capacity.
한국 사람들은 아파트 사람들에게 이렇게 소음도 내지 않고 랜티비도 잘 내는데 무슨 저기 고장이 나서 가서 얘기를 하면 오피스에서 들어주질 않아서 참 불편합니다. 말도 못하고.
Tenants whose rents are raised incorrectly may be taken to housing court for non-payment of rent because they were not able to communicate with NYCHA to resolve the error.
요즘은 너무 이렇게 아파트 측에서 말을 안 들어주니까 우리를 여기서 살게 할런지 참 불편해요. 그래서 한국 사람 대표로 말을 해줄 통역자가 필요합니다.
Two of my neighbor had no heating for years and they could not get, get it fixed because NYCHA employee did not communicate with them in Korean. CCC does not have Korean service at the management center. They don't know how to use language line. Rarely when tenants get language line, the language line people don't know how, don't know about NYCHA rules and they need training. Uh, the estimated wait time to get CCC service in other languages is about 20 minutes. We demand that there should be no budget cut, but funding to language access. I want to emphasize that there are simply not enough to provide efficient service to tenants that speak limited English. Language access, not luxury, but our urgent need. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have her comments so that we can follow up, please? Keisha McAllen followed by Ramonique Itien.
Hello, my name is Keisha McAllen and I'm kinda concerned in reference to New York City housing. I try my best as a member of the community to pray for my community. Because there's so much changes going on that I see on the outside that is affecting the inside. I could feel the change where you start to feel you're not welcome. You feel like you're not welcome. And this is a personal feeling. What I'm saying to you is what I do. If my community comes out and pray, I'm out there with them. I try to be the best person that I can be in my community. I pray for the culture of the community to still stay and thrive, you know, where you have people coming together and showing the richness of the community. That's something I always have enjoyed seeing parties or gatherings or, you know, but I really feel like an outsider. I'm starting to feel that feeling. It's so important, especially even for those who may not be the best of tenants. There's a need for supports in different areas. There's a great need. I'm here and I have my children with me and I hope that they understand, I'm not into the political, I'm not all into all of this. I just know that we all as individual can try to do our best and be the best tenants that we can with, sometimes we may need help, sometimes we may need some support, but all of this is like a lot of information, but there's a need for, just like I heard another person say, training. There's young men, young women need, you have inside help already. There's people who live there who should be able to give back to their own community and learn some things and be able to help fix what's already there. You know, I, I didn't intend to say what I'm saying, but I know that that is within me, it's in my heart. I'm, I'm, I'm praying for all of you as you continue to do your work. You doing the work, you doing the most highest work. So everyone in their own position are doing their work, the best way they, that they know how. So I hope that you're able to take into consideration, as I said to you, this is not my words, this, this is what the Creator said. Keep doing what you can and remember even those who don't come up to that place, remember the people, there are people who cannot afford, they're struggling, they're, they're really not making the way, but continue to remember, take a second, second thought, they're trying as well as those who are well off.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ramonique Itien.
All right. Okay, so I just want to say that I am, you know, as being a youth and it's, you could say this, very capitalistic American empire that, you know, spent all this money on the military, what they could be using to fund many, you know, different programs and housing around this country, you know? And it's really sad because, I mean, I'm come from a beautiful, you know, you know, family, the immigrants, you know, coming from the Caribbean, you know, so it's that, it's a really beautiful thing. So I could speak on that, you know, with the administration, they talking about getting rid, you know, immigrants that made this country what it is today. No, because it's, you know, you have the people that came from Africa, then you have immigrants that came from all over to build this country up. And it's really sad because. And it's really sad because I'm living in Best Side, you know, Southside Gardens, you know, and we have this beautiful black neighborhood that's being whiten out because, you know, they don't want us there, you know, they want to make it more for the more people that can afford it. They don't want us poor black folk that's been there for the longest while, that made these communities always been, like Harlem, Brownsville, it's all that blackness. That's what made these neighborhoods unique. And that's really sad to see that, you know, and then we have all these politicians, you know, the election's coming up, they're coming down, saying like vote and vote and vote, when they get the vote, they don't do nothing for us, you know, it's really sad. It's really sad that, you know, and that really hurts me, you know, like we have this right to free speech and we feel like our voices are not being heard, so it's very, very deplorable, you know, and how to say, I mean, we had to come together, we had to build our own, you know, because it's sad because you see everybody coming, you know, we had to build for ourselves because if the people not go, if these governments is not going to answer to us, we have to answer for ourselves. I think that's what the people up in here right now have to do, you know, we can't depend on these government officials, we have to build for ourselves, you know, and it's really sad, you know? You know, all this, this is a hidden agenda, you know, all these governments don't know what's going on, they have it planned out, it's all behind the scenes, you know, they put the whole charade, that whole fake news they got going on, this is all fake, man, they, they don't care, they, they put a whole big charade with the whole politician, they fighting back and forth like, oh, this should turn, they already know who's gonna win. That's just for the, for our brainwash, for our entertainment, they thinking we're stupid. We're not stupid, we're very intelligent people. And I'm tired of it, I'm really tired of it. All of these fake news out here, man, it's, it's really sad and they come in and change up everything, you know, to make us like, oh, yes, one against the other, and they're all controlled by puppets, they're the puppets and the puppet master control them and it's to fool us to give that illusion, but we had no.
Thank you, Ms. Etienne.
Thank you, having a good night.
Thank you. Robert Swan followed by Carrie Sealy. Okay, Carrie Sealy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just want to applaud all the speakers who went before me. I am a new resident of NITIA, Castle Hill, so I'm still learning all of the policies and how things are working. I, I'm coming today to speak about the smoke-free housing, the smoke-free housing policy. I'm a community health worker and I work with residents in East and Central Harlem. So I know the effects of smoking and how smoking can come into your apartment. I smell it myself, but I also know that it's hard to stop. I'm not a smoker, but I have family members who smoke. So I just want to know what is, I'm on also the board, as my colleague had talked about earlier, for the NITIA Smoking Free Housing Board. What is NITIA going to do to help residents to stop smoking? It's easy to make these policies, but what's going to happen to help people to do this? You know, there's a lot of people been smoking for years and years and years and it's not just easy to just stop like that. What kind of things are going to happen? What things are going to be in place? Because we can't say that you're going to be evicted because you're not following this policy. What things are going to be in place to help people to make this happen? That's it.
Good night. Thank you, Ms. Sealy. Dr. Jesse Fields and then Maria Forbes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Jesse Fields and I think one of the many questions that have been raised tonight that have, that have not been responded to is the overall question of why NITIA is subsidizing private developers and giving, giving money to private developers rather than get tax dollars nonetheless? Why do that rather than invest money in supporting public housing and building housing for the poor in this city? So the, the Next Gen, the Next Gen NITIA plan, the New York City Housing Authority is leasing playgrounds, parking lots and open spaces to private developers to build privately-owned and controlled housing. And NITIA is also selling 50% or more shares in existing public housing complexes to developers who will hold the rights to those shares and over, over the next 30 years can convert those to market rate housing. So what does this mean for public housing in New York City? These plans will end public housing, but the people of this city, the diverse people of this city such as are in this room tonight and many hundreds and thousands more are not going to permit this to happen in New York City. It has happened in Philadelphia, in St. Louis, in Chicago, and the elected officials made all kinds of promises from Daly to people all over the country. The elected officials said, no, we're going to take care of you, we're going to do all these nice things for you, and people were displaced from Cabrini-Green in Chicago and other places. We're not going to let that happen in this city. Privatization means, privatization means the end of public housing and it means massive displacement of people, the residents of public housing. In other words, it means the abandonment of our people, the abandonment of the poor. This is unjust. I follow, as many do, the teachings and leadership of Dr. Lenora Filani and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I'm here to say the poor people, diverse people, middle-class, wealthy, people of all colors, people of goodwill are going to stand up against this. This is not, we're not, we're not going to go down without a fight. We are going to stand up. We're going to come together and stand up under the leadership of people like Dr. Filani and Tenant Association Presidents who are brave enough to stand up under threat of eviction. People are being evicted and they are scared, but they're going to fight. We know how to fight, we know how to make changes in this country and we're going to fight and stand up, we're going to come together and speak truth to power.
Maria Forbes followed by Lourdes Camacho.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? We are volunteers and are very disrespected by New York City Housing Authority staff due to the lack of resident participation by law and by the regs. President Roosevelt developed this public housing for low income and I'm going to hear, I'm here to tell you that NITIA is the worst slum lord in the country. I don't know how y'all, y'all make the papers every day, but y'all don't get addressed as being slum lords. The Broke Amendment has not been changed or amended since it was developed, so I don't understand how NITIA has come about with all of these amendments and all of these changes to our housing related to Next Generation, RED and Section 3, if nobody's mentioned that, that we're getting ready to lose Section 3. The RED privatization program with Section 8, I spoke to my attorney, I've had my attorney on retainer, she had me on retainer since 1818, and she told me, nobody wants Section 8. So when you say that private management is going to take over this RED situation and we're going to become Section 8, nobody don't want Section 8. I'm scared of the RED right now, but I need my apartment fixed. Y'all came out with more ABC programs than them presidents came out with. I don't know with the RED to the NEXT, to the MAP, to the other program and the other program, because y'all got so many letters on this program. And that's due to the lack of resident participation by law and by the regs, that y'all don't sit down and discuss nothing with us. There is no freeze on management, however, we have no caretakers. I don't know how the hell that's going on. Cops should be dismantled to be reorganized. That's what needs to happen with the CCCOP, it just need to be dismantled because when that lady went to jail back in 1990, y'all sure this, y'all dismantle it. You didn't tell us nothing about no bylaws, no nothing, no nothing, they dismantled it because that lady was misappropriating the funding for NITIA or for the residents. 25 residents should turn out NITIA's executive board meetings every month to stop the agenda until they address our concerns, because if you get there at 9:30, you could speak. And I'm telling you, if 25 of us came there every month and stood on the line, they don't have no time, because let me tell you something, the meeting is only held for two hours and sometimes they have 25 items on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
And if we keep talking about our repairs and our concerns, we will get something addressed.
Lourdes Camacho followed by Tyrone Ball.
Hi, yes, hi, my name is Lourdes Camacho. I'm a resident of Amson Houses and I have a little FYI for all of us here in case you don't know. Donald Trump just assigned a lady by name of Lynn Patton as the head of the HUD. Well, let me tell you a little story about Lynn Patton. She was President Trump's wedding planner. Now, I don't know about y'all, but a wedding planner has nothing to do with public housing. What I suggest you all do, what you're doing now is get together, mobilize with whoever you need to mobilize with and get the job done. Go to Washington and let them know, we don't want no wedding planner taking care of our money because that, that's it, enough is enough.
Tyrone Ball and then Narad Hussain.
I don't think a brain surgeon is much better at running the HUD either. However, with that being said, I hope the people who are sitting up here on the panel realize one thing and it keeps on coming on, because I was, I was all prepared to talk about something else, but I'm going to say this. What you're seeing is fear and anger and you're seeing continuing gentrification and the one thing that you have is your home and now your home looks like that's in jeopardy too. So now you're seeing all that and you're not talking to anybody. You're giving us, okay, this is what Next Gen is going to be, we're going to take care of envelopes and we're doing that. All that's fine, but how you going to do that when you have mold in your house? Because it's not just the outside water, it's the inside water, it's your pipes are 60 years old and they haven't been replaced. It's the simple fact of the matter that the boiler that's been there was the boiler that came up in 1954. That's older than me and that's older than about, I'd say a quarter of the people in this room, but you know. But the reality is this, you're going to keep on getting anger and feedback like this until you actually say something that's positive, because nobody wants to be Philadelphia or Chicago or Baltimore, no one wants to be London or Paris because it's happened over there before it happened here. But what's going to happen now is this, you're just going to keep on getting the same type of feedback. So when you have the meetings, come out, speak, explain what's going on, ask for tenants to come out and give their feedback and how they feel and what they feel is needed, because the best person that actually knows what's going on is the person who lives there. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Narad Hussain and then we have A.M. Goodrich.
Hi, my name is Nevett Hussain. I'm with Cav. We organize Chinese, Korean and Bangladeshi tenants in Queensbridge, Ravenswood and Astoria Houses. And I have here Lisa Ng, who is a Queensbridge Houses resident. She wants to say something.
Hi, oh, hi, my name is Lisa. I've lived in Queensbridge for 20 years, 20 of my, 20 years of my 22-year-old life. And I'd just like to say that I grew up translating documents for my parents, like imagine a six-year, a six-year-old, an eight-year-old trying to figure out how to describe things like income recertification in Chinese, right? So I just want to emphasize the importance of language access in, in public housing. And let's see, in 2015, Cav released a report called No Access, which highlighted the lack of true language access for thousands of tenants who live in public housing that don't speak any English. And because of this, tenants are, don't get repairs done and they're not able to submit necessary documents. And NITIA does have like a language access plan, which provides like a translation upon request, but it's not sufficient, right? And, and right now in the era of like Donald Trump and this like intense anti-immigrant sentiment, it's imperative that NITIA like provides adequate language access to its tenants that speak limited English. And also just a side note, we need more like actually truly affordable housing because I've lived in public housing all my life and I would like to live near my family, but I would like to have, I would like to live near my family, but not be a part of the industries that are actively displacing people who live in long city, so you know, yeah.
Thank you. A.M. Goodrich followed by Joshua Barnett.
Good evening, fellas. So on behalf of, you know, of many organizations throughout that, I want to explain what's happening, what's going on in Farragut and also Wacall Gardens. First of all, we never heard about what's happening with Wacall, when you know, like where the, by all the unit regarding like extreme low income or barons. So this is a problem face to face, time and time again, year after year, with all this corruption and all this bribery. Now because of this administration, you know, when you talk about immigrants, you will get deported by the, by ICE. This is a problem face to face with, it's nothing new to this administration on the federal level. But that, that quote unquote, they're going to have an increase in problem with residential, where they're caused by broken window, stopping fresh policies. This is going on and on since it's like over, day after day, time and time. When it comes to that, when it comes to local hiring, when it comes to a lot of poor people waiting and waiting for jobs, like an opportunity, look at what happened in 77, oh, you don't give jobs to the poor people, this and that. This is 2017 right now. All the solution they ask to have jobs of local hiring with the people who live in NITIA poverty and what they ain't waiting for, they'll get nothing, nothing, nothing at all. This is a total disgrace. Disgrace maybe means all because of like a lack of resources, a lack of higher education opportunity to prepare all these students who live in public housing from dropping out of high school and into, and into college, so there'd be a path to send this shit. Where's, what about Middle America? So like, because we work hard, we play hard and we work our, we work our butts off and we have to join Middle, Middle America to make sure we're received. And what do we get? We, we have nothing, nothing at all, all because we stuck here, faced with all the gentrification, all the mass corruption and all this corporate real estate, try to play some games. We had enough of that. Now the time that we can shut, shut RMB down and we will, and we will take everything we have, this is the call of people control our system. Where we, where we come to our, where we come to the plate, we listen, we, we had to speak. So when we speak to our community where the issue are, we had to, we had to listen. So if we don't get what we done, we was shut down. Plain simple.
Joshua Barnett and then Melanie Asciello.
Good evening. My name is Josh Barnett. I'm a NITIA employee. For the last 18 years, I've worked in the Design Department in the Capital Projects Division. I'm also a very Union Proud Member, Local 375, DC 37. And I would need a lot more than three minutes to describe the demoralization among the staff, among those of us who work at NITIA. I've been here 18 years, I've never seen anything like it. One of the field inspectors on Friendswood said to me the other day, no worries after he had a fight with his supervisor, just six more years and I'm out of here. That's the mentality. People are counting their days towards retirement like they're convicts looking for parole and it really shouldn't be that way. But the demoralization that sets in among the staff is a reflection of the demoralization that you hear from the residents. We're frustrated because nobody listens to us either. We see the loss of our jobs like the people see the loss of their apartments and more importantly, we see the consultants walking all over 90 Church Street and 250 Broadway because our jobs, like the apartments, it's become all about profits and not all about service anymore. When I started at the Housing Authority, there were about 16,000 employees, we're down to under 12,000 now, but when I look at the plan, whatever it says, it's also look, what, what doesn't it say? It doesn't say we need more staff. If anything, it calls for cutting more staff. We have a skeleton staff as it is and it's not just a union issue. We're the, those slides that were up there, we're the ones who do that work. When we're cut, everybody bleeds. We, we, we need more people, need to hire more NITIA residents. Let's remember, almost a quarter of the staff are NITIA residents, but if things keep going the way they are, we're going to have less staff and less NITIA hiring. hirers. When you look at the RED slash PAC program, there's nothing in there that guarantees that the workers who maintain those privatized developments are going to be civil service or union workers. What's to prevent them from hiring a fly-by-night maintenance company that's gonna pay people minimum wage or even less? When people see the RED program as the loss of their apartments, I can see it going as a union busting tactic and neither of us wants to see it go down that route. We need more public housing, not less. We need more public housing workers, not less. And we say, where's the money? When you look at the federal budget, fifty-five percent of the discretionary budget goes towards the military. We need to be out there calling for cuts to the bloated war budget, tax the rich, make sure that they pay their fair share. Corporate profits are at all-time high, but corporate profit, corporate tax at all-time low. And NITSHA needs to be out there with those of us who are calling for the rich to pay their fair share. We're all in this together. We have to maintain this. But it's just scary that the next generation program looks too much like the next gentrification program. We really gotta turn that around. Private money always comes with strings attached. We have to make sure that public housing stays public.
Melanie Ocello and Melissa Ortiz.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Melanie Ocello and I am currently Vice President of our Resident Board at 344 East 28th Street in Manhattan, which is also scheduled to transfer, to transition to Section 8. That's another meeting. This summer, I have had the wonderful opportunity to represent my development as a voice on the NITSHA, on the, excuse me, on the NITSHA Smoking and Health Advisory Panel. A lot of you are probably thinking, smoking? Like really? We have so many bigger problems than smoking. But I welcomed it as a chance for someone to listen to me. I've been Vice President for about four years off and on. I see Leroy, Uka, Mauricio, Mr. Cabell, Carolina. I see all these familiar faces. I resigned because community operations didn't work with me. Now we have wonderful resident engagement and I'm hoping they don't get cut and done away with because they're working with us. Uh, we can actually use a credit card for our monthly meetings and I mean, it's just, it's, you can see change is slowly coming in certain areas. However, I'm, I'm hopeful that our efforts to create a smoke-free resident building will come to fruition. I just feel that, um, it's a little bit embarrassing to have these monthly meetings as a, a board vice president and disappoint the residents that have come to me with their issues and I cannot help them. Sometimes as Vice President, I cannot help myself. I currently have a neighbor that abandoned her apartment. I've made a few phone calls to find out what to do because I think it's becoming a stash house for drugs. Nobody cares. I'm waiting to see how I can handle that. There's a resident that's been in our building for over forty years. Um, her partner is deceased. She's a beautiful, wonderful woman who's worked her whole life and she's gonna get evicted. Can we do an amnesty program for people that are hiding and living in shame in NITSHA to possibly help these people stay in NITSHA? I believe there was an amnesty program some time ago, but I don't know. We have a winding road ahead of us, but we must not continue the systemic approach of threatening residents with eviction for situations that could be easily remedied with proper communication. Please work with the resident board and support us. We're in the trenches, so to speak, and we're unpaid volunteers. I'm on call twenty-four hours a day. People know they can come to me and I try my best to help them. And I know that you sitting up there, you could be sitting here with the difference of one paycheck. Maybe you've been here before and now you're good, so you don't really care about us. My father's a Vietnam veteran. My brother's a retired police officer. My son's father is a retired police officer. I've never done drugs. I smoked weed in high school. I would love to change the way people look at us when we walk down the street and... My daughter's a college graduate. My son is going to come to college. I go to school here. I am the face of NITSHA.
Thank you, Ms. Ocello.
Give us a chance.
Thank you. Melissa Ortiz followed by Ed Brady.
Hi, good evening. As a former tenant of Bayview Houses, I commuted one hour and twenty minutes to go to high school at Norman Thomas, the Thirty-third and Park. That was a ten-minute walk to the bus, a twenty-minute bus ride to the station before I boarded the subway for an hour-long ride to the sixth train at Thirty-third Street. In 2018, New York City Transit will redirect current Bayview families to transfer to the dysfunctional and chronically late aid train at Broadway Junction, East New York, where the escalator is one of the highest transfer points at two and a half stories. And if the escalator's broken, good luck. Community transportation is an ongoing issue for NITSHA and impactful to community, to community residents as they commute to school, work, training programs and higher education. I would like to see that NITSHA and its residents rise up and involve themselves with the MTA issues to ensure that transportation is accessible to NITSHA residents and low-income families in a timely and ultimate, and that it is timely and it ultimately leads, as it ultimately leads to access to jobs and higher education. I also wanna share my time with Evelyn Cruz from Congresswoman... No, you're being called, never mind. All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ed Brady and then Janet Wooton.
Good evening. My name is Ed Brady. I reside on the east side of Manhattan. I grew up in the South Bronx. I was content to listen tonight. I came here to support other people, but I feel impelled to make the following statement. I would like to make a suggestion to the board members and also to you, Madam Chair. I would like to suggest that you make yourselves directly available to the seven, over the seven percent of the people that you say you represent. And what I mean by that is that you actually go to the tenants, to these buildings and to speak with people directly. I cannot understand how you could present this without speaking to people and understanding their situations. That really is it. I strongly suggest that all of you talk directly to the people that you say you represent. And Madam Chair, I would offer my own services to you. I own the chauffeur service. I'm very well, uh, aware of the roadways in New York City. I would take you anywhere you like. I'm semi-retired. I would give my time to you so that you could present yourself to the people that you say you represent. Thank you.
Janet Wooton.
Yeah, we've heard from a lot of people tonight. Um, I'm following my colleague, Robert Scott, Jesse Fields, Dr. Filani and others, who've said that for the majority of us in New Yorkers, New Yorkers around New York City, we do not support this plan. We want to live in a city that is inclusive, that includes all people, including the poor. We want a plan that takes back the 1.4 or $6 billion that is being given away in our taxes to developers. And we wanna take that money and put it into the kind of housing that we need to house all people in New York City. We are not stupid. We understand that the facts and the realities that you have presented to us are facts and realities based on a certain set of values. The majority of people in New York share the values that we are expressing here tonight. We want decent, affordable housing for all people in this city.
Evelyn Cruz representing Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Evelyn. I'm here representing the Congresswoman Velazquez, who's in Washington this evening. Uh, I wanna thank the board chair, uh, our chairwoman, our concerned public residents and everyone here tonight, uh, listening to our residents and NITSHA workers. I can assure you that Congresswoman Velazquez continues to fight against those issues that are harmful to our community. Uh, as a senior member of the House Financial Service Committee and the only member from New York City on the Housing and Insurance Subcommittee, she continues to work to ensure that we get safe and affordable housing in New York. We recognize that NITSHA is the last affordable housing bastion in New York City. We get the fact that, uh, development in our public housing land, public land is a hardship. We represent Wyckoff Gardens, we represent LaGuardia Houses, uh, and we are working with our tenants and we hear their concerns and we urge NITSHA to listen to the input, to take the input from our residents, to include them when they issue the RFP and to understand that nobody knows their housing condition. Nobody knows their community better than the residents that live in those developments. Housing is at an all-time high. I don't have to tell you. In Bushwick, our rent are $3,500. East New York was recently rezoned. We're seeing rent skyrocketing over $2,500. We need to protect public housing. But with that said, we also know we have a Trump administration who does not care about public housing residents. And in this budget, the proposed budget to HUD, we are seeing nothing but draconian cuts. And I wanna make it clear that as much as Congresswoman Velazquez and other members of the New York City delegation are fighting and as many times as Chairwoman has attended meetings and conferences in Washington DC, we need to step up and send Trump administration a message. The cuts for the capital subsidies will be two-thirds, resulting in over $210 million in loss. This is a loss that's gonna impact future repairs and improvement to public housing. The authorities operating subsidies will be cut by eleven percent in this budget. Fewer staffers. I heard someone say they were a worker. We need more workers in, in NITSHA developments. The proposed budget is going to cut it by eleven percent. This is not acceptable to the member. It should not be acceptable to residents here. And we need to continue to fight together to get a message out to this administration that this budget is not acceptable. They're also going to be cutting about thirteen thousand budget, uh, thirteen thousand Section 8 housing vouchers. Uh, where are our Section 8 voucher holders going to relocate to? This is a concern to the Congresswoman. We need to work together and the Congresswoman will continue to work with the New York City delegation to find ways to stop this heartless and destructive proposed budget by the administration. But on the other side, I'm sorry, give me a second. On the other hand, we are also concerned with the next-gen plan for our developments. So we know that the next gen, the 50-50 program is a complicated process. It's very technical, but the Congresswoman urges NITSHA to do its very best, its very best to ensure that every tenant of LaGuardia Houses, of Wyckoff Gardens and future developments under the RED program are engaged and that their concerns are taken into consideration. We are continuing to monitor this process. Will it work? We don't know. It hasn't been really tested. So we're just here to say, we will continue to fight for funding for New York City. We want our tenants to stand up. This room, we need to fill these rooms when we have these hearings. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. We'll take your comments. Our final speaker for the evening is Roxanne Reed.
Good evening, everybody. The best is for last. My name is Roxanne Reed. I'm from Castle Hill Houses in the Bronx. I am a community activist. I'm a Community Voices Heard member. I'm a leader. And I'm a leader in my community. I said, it's so sad to walk through my community and see how people's living with fly swappers in the floor by their apartment where they got roaches stuck to the fly swatters, got flies. It's very sad, you know? It's so sad that we don't have elevators running properly. The other day, I had to get one of my neighbors out the elevator. Soon as they stepped in, the inside door closed and the outside stayed open. And the baby started screaming, a little girl. So I went over to them and I pushed the door, I pulled the inside, the outside door and I pulled it and it connected together and slammed where the door, the inside door opened a little bit and then it had to bounce again where the elevator had to go up and you could hear the little girl crying. This is sad, what's happening with these cuts. Y'all say the next generation? I'm working on the next generation to compare better my community. And that's what I would like to see, a better community, okay? It's sad for us to be living in apartments with mold and mildew. As I go through people's apartments and look at the mold in their house, people having leaks in their house, their apartments are falling in from the inside. It's nice that they putting the canvas up there. It's beautiful. I'm pleased that the canvas is being put up in Castle Hill. But you gotta take care of the inside and y'all need to do that, okay? Y'all say the money. Where's the money? Y'all know what to do about the money? Start getting into taking care of these people who throwing, throw stuff out the window and start giving them fines, okay? Because this is ridiculous, how they sit there and throw Pampers, throw different things. You gotta look on your, on your air conditioner and find something laying up there. All right? That ain't right. Come on. We, you know, it's real sad what, what NITSHA is going down. And as I go through each building, how the hallways is dirty. We don't have no workers. You understand? We need more workers. Let's get some volunteers, some of our people in our neighborhood. Give them some paint. Let them paint the hallways. Let them get to start to clean up our buildings, clean up our own community. Let's get it together, all right? I wanna thank y'all very much and let's get it together, all right? Stand up and fight. Let's fight together. Good night.
Good night. Thank you all for your participation. And this concludes the, uh, Significant Amendment Public Hearing.
Ms., excuse me. Hi. Good evening. My name is Caviar Sabio.
I'm sorry, I don't have a speaker clip for you.
Of course you do not. But because there was a gentleman who did not go up, I think there's a spare three minutes. Again, my name is Caviar Sabio. Good evening. I'm a member of NITSHA Housing. And I want everyone to raise their hand to these questions. Who knows who Michael Jackson is? Raise your hand. Panel also, if you know who Michael Jackson is, raise your hand. Then clearly you don't know anything about music. Secondly, secondly, who knows when NITSHA started? What year? Raise your hand if you know. In the, in the event that you don't, 1934. And the president at that time was Franklin D. Roosevelt. Currently, this is 2017. God in heaven, I don't know why Trump is president, but your will. Anywho, from 1934 to 2017, and how is this better? If you wanna have a next-generation NITSHA, you have to make sure you show some effort for this generation of NITSHA. Because honestly, if you don't, what next generation do you have? I'm twenty-seven years old. I've lived in NITSHA all my life. I've seen the change. I'm a member of CVH, Community Voices Heard. Have any of you been a NITSHA resident growing up? Were any of you a NITSHA resident as a child? Any of you? If you have, raise your hand, please.
Thank you for your comments. We're gonna conclude this session of the New York City Housing Authority Public Hearing for the Significant Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2017 Annual Plan and the Draft Fiscal Year 2018 Annual Plan. Thank you all for coming out.